Ben Ricewhite.
Here.
Williams here.
Here.
You have a call.
I would move to approve the agenda.
And a second?
No. All of us in favor, right?
Aye.
And opposed? And the agenda's been approved. Jenny, we're on.
Our district mission is to teach all, reach all. Our district vision is Urbendale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. Our school board mission is to partner with stakeholders to teach all and reach all through governance of board policy and operating protocol.
Thank you. First up will be the superintendent's report.
Okay, so on the more you know, what I wanted to do tonight, there's an agenda item coming up that will address this. But just to kind of explain to people who might be looking at the agenda and wondering why there are items that have cross outs or otherwise been changed, I just want to point out, there was a Dear Colleague letter that was sent out. And this is a federal executive order was released regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, what we call D E I. This executive order is temporarily enjoined by the courts. And the U S Department of Education sent this letter out as of February fourteenth to address similar issues. And stressing to schools, they need to be looking at their programs, policies, and positions to ensure legal compliance with Title VI. In a recent U S Supreme Court case, Students for Fair Admissions versus Harvard, which is the Department of Education, now sets the framework for evaluating use of race by state actors in schools covered under Title VI. The letter states that schools may not treat a person differently than it treats another person because of that person's race as a preference or otherwise infurtherance of D E I. The letter further states that U S Department of Education will assess compliance with this expectation. Per the letter, additional guidance from the Department of Education will be coming. We recently also received, I can't talk tonight, I'm sorry. We recently received an F A Q document with additional guidance from the Department of Education. And we will be working through that guidance with our legal as well as it's appropriate. And in order to comply with the letter from the Dear Colleague letter at this time, it's been recommended that U C S D evaluate our programs and activities, both for students and employees, and take steps to change, review, and modify as appropriate those things that would be considered impermissible by D E I or race-based initiatives. We want all of our staff and students and community to know, our mission doesn't change, to teach all, reach all. And we will be continued to be committed to anti-discrimination of all kinds. What you're seeing in some of these agenda items and you'll see in the strategic plan are, I'm trying to show a visual of how this is going to affect us. And we've run this through our legal department, so we've started to make the changes that we were asked to make. This is going to be an ongoing thing. So I want to assure anybody who is listening or watching this that we do intend to comply with the law. And it's not something that can happen overnight. We need to take time to be able to do this as we are guided to do it. So that's where you'll start to see different things on the agendas and different places that will be altered. We'll get into a little bit more of that. We have one item tonight that we're asking to alter based on this information. The only other two items I had were that our registration is ongoing. So any families that have not registered for next year, please register. And the open enrollment window has closed for students going into grades one to twelve next year. But anyone who wants to come to Urbendale as a kindergarten student has until September first. So that window continues to be open. It doesn't mean you can't apply now. It just means that you have a deadline of September first. So those are the items that I had.
So now the K twelve math update. Need more chairs?
Good evening, Brandon Schaub, Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm joined with a group of colleagues today to give an update around the math curriculum review. I'm going to let everyone introduce themselves first.
Janine Hauser, Curriculum Facilitator.
Abby Kazony, fifth grade teacher at Webster Elementary.
Jill Miller, Curriculum Facilitator.
Riley Spear, third grade teacher at Olmstead.
Erin Reeve Lobon, geometry teacher at Urbendale High School.
Abby Nelson, seventh grade math at U M S.
All right, and as you might remember, or you may have watched this prior, that last year, we went through, actually, it was two years ago now, sorry. We went through a full curriculum review of kindergarten through twelfth, preschool through twelfth grade mathematics. And part of that process was to identify those key shifts instructionally, but also from the standpoint of the learner. And those are paralleled in the math standards that the state of Iowa put forth just last year. So the work that we had done the year prior definitely paralleled to what the state released April of 2024. This idea of a focus on focus, coherence, rigor, and the content standards. So those shifts are well represented in the standards. And a large part of that is this idea of the mathematical practices. And that's how students experience mathematics and do mathematics in the classroom. And definitely represented in the work that we're doing as a system.
So just a little bit of an overview on where we've been over the last two years with regard to implementation. In June of 2023, we had an intensive implementation, three-day training workshop to kind of get us kick-started for the first school year implementation. Then in the summer, the teachers had the opportunity to spend six hours of time that would allow them to complete the planning for their first unit that they would be implementing in the fall. So we wanted them to have the time to be ready so they could kind of hit the floor running come August of that first year of implementation. During the first year, we had additional late start, purposeful planning sessions, two times a month, where the focus was again on the preparation for the units that they'd be implementing throughout the year. And then this year, we've extended that, but they had that late start, purposeful planning time one time a month in the second year of implementation. And we had a full day of professional learning last May where we extended the information that we gave them in order to make that implementation a little bit more successful.
So this year, for year two, we've been able to dig into training to deepen implementation and unit planning. We were able to have on a pretty regular basis, half-day deep dives into planning for a unit with either grade alike or course alike teams that were implementing I M. So with the idea that now that we've taught it for a year, we can come together and really dig into what misconceptions did we see coming up with students? What lessons felt tricky? What representations and strategies worked really well? And then how can we systematize that across the grade level? During that time, we also were able to do some I S A S analysis. So we unearthed strengths and opportunities in the specific math domains with regards to that I S A S data that we got back. Also, we analyzed which areas within those domains and standards were assessed with a deeper, greater fluency. And then last, we looked at some recently released problems for each grade level and frequently missed problems for each grade level. So we could do that same work of looking at misconceptions, looking at the vocabulary that was used in the assessment, and then how it compared with what we could do so that we could plan proactively for instruction. We know that, you'd love to hear from us, but we brought some teachers here to also be able to share their experience. Oh, that's fun.
It's the video.
That's okay. It's the video. They can talk to it anyway.
Okay, yeah, so throughout our year, the third grade team at Olmstead's had many opportunities to deepen our learning of illustrative math. Highlights include all of our professional learning that Jill was just talking about as a district-wide third grade team, and our latest coaching cycle at Olmstead with our instructional coach, Kelsey Jacobs. So the video that you can see at other times was taken apart of our coaching module. Students did a really great job synthesizing their thought processes and explaining how they found their answer, which is a big part of the I M curriculum and what we've been learning about. These videos also allowed us to grow as a collaborative team and build what we call our third grade super teacher model, implementing things going well from all four classrooms and trying to blend it throughout the grade level. The learning we've done over the past two years has helped us plan better, assess better, and have better conversations surrounding student learning. We're also seeing real-time data from our work with our third grade students at Olmstead with so much positive growth. And many students are above proficiency. We're just really proud of the work we've been able to do with this new curriculum in the two short years of implementation. And just thank you to everyone who's helped us with our learning and perfecting our teaching practices and letting us share tonight.
Hi, Abby Kazony. This is my fifth grade class. So what you'll see here is the start of a warm-up. So I had them all come down to the carpet. And something I really like about illustrative math are their warm-ups and how they incorporate mental math. And so just today, we have been in our decimal unit. And so we just wrapped up multiplying decimals. And today was our first day of dividing decimals. And so they don't just throw them into mental math. The progression of learning is really amazing. So the first problem they gave them was one divided by one-tenth, which was a fraction, which in a previous unit, we learned how to do keep, switch, flip. So keep the first number, switch to multiplication, and then switch the numerator and denominator. So they just do one times ten equals ten. The next problem was two divided by one-tenth of fraction. So they were able to do that. Then they loaded them into one divided by one-tenth, the decimal. So then they knew, oh, I can just change the decimal to one-tenth of fraction and do it the same way. And so then we were able to do just like thumbs up when you have it, add fingers, and then share with their partner that was right next to them, and then share out, which has been really positive. Other ways that they've done the warm-up is like true or false. So you can give like thumbs up for true, thumbs down for false. But I like how they don't just like throw them in with hard math problems. It makes sense that we relate it back to the fractions that we've learned earlier in unit three. And now we're on to unit five and can relate it to decimals. The other thing I really like about illustrative math is the centers or the game aspect. So in the lower grades, there's built-in time for this. In the upper grades, it's kind of how you can fit it in. So since we're on year two, there's some lessons that I know that typically run shorter. And so I like to start with a game. It kind of increases buy-in, and my kids get super competitive over it. And create a timer and like take points, and it's just really awesome. It also helps with management. So like at the end of a lesson every day, they'll have a cooldown. And so then they'll turn in the cooldown. And then there's a list of games that they can choose from, and they can pick a partner and sit around the room and play a game. The game you're seeing right here is called Target Numbers. And this was with, we were working on subtracting decimals. And so they all start at the number two. And then they flip a random card up, and it's a number one through nine. And so they either decide to subtract that number in tenths or hundreds. So if they have two, they flip a seven. They can either subtract seven tenths or seven hundredths from that number. The trick is, is they only get six turns, and they have to get as close to one as possible without going under. So then we came back together, and I was like, what's your strategy? How did you figure it out? And one of my students raised his hand and said, actually, I knew. If the first number I flipped up was one through four, I was going to make it in the tenths. And if the first number I flipped up was five through nine, I was going to make it in the hundreds. And I was like, why did he say that? And they were all like, because if you make a number like nine in the tens to start out with, if you do two minus nine tenths, you're going to be really close to one, and you still have five more turns. So then it was like really increasing that understanding through a game instead of me just like talking at them, which I really, really liked and enjoyed about this curriculum.
Hi. The pictures that you see on the right side are my students engaged with, they're participating always in a wide variety of learning activities. We structure the activities with collaborative partner practice, explorations, and hands-on methods to define mathematical vocabulary and concepts. So my student above is learning how to combine like terms, so a little pre-algebra foundation. We use little bathroom tiles. We write on them with dry erase markers. We group, we sort all the different terms together so that they understand what goes together, what's common, what's not common. And then my student down below is using some pasta to figure out the best line of fit with a scatter plot. So I do appreciate all of the different methods and that the I M curriculum gives us. At U M S, the math teachers are observing noticeable positive trends in our student engagement in year two of implementing illustrative mathematics. Our students benefit from the instructional routines that are in place and are having meaningful conversations during each lesson. They are reasoning when asked which one doesn't belong during the warm-up, or they are always offering their strategies and methods. And I'm always asking about the how, did you get there? Not just what's the right or correct answer. So we always know that in our math classes, it's always all about the how or the why. Our end of unit assessment data is climbing closer to the eighty percent proficiency mark in seventh grade. Just past unit five, our students were learning about how to compute with rational numbers without a calculator. And eighty-three percent of our seventh graders met proficiency. There is always room for improvement. And we as a math department are always looking for resources to assist our intervention time with our students and also finding opportunities for our students who are reaching mastery sooner than others. But overall, we're really excited about the growth that we see every year. And we can't wait to keep continuing the momentum and celebrate their success.
Is that Hattie's classroom all left?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so at the high school level, we've been, I'm new this year to Urbendale High School. So I've been learning illustrative mathematics for the first time. One thing that I and my co-teacher Anna Christian really like about it is how, as you've been hearing, it pushes kids to focus on the thought process that gets them through math problems and into the real problem-solving skills behind all of it, rather than just, you know, spitting out formulas and finding answers quickly. What you see in Hattie's classroom, there are some of the students acting in the format we call Building Thinking Classrooms. This was part of a professional development that the math team at the high school went to in February for two days. It's a method that really aligns pretty well with illustrative math because it gets kids standing, doing math with groups of random other students so that they can both work on solving interesting, engaging, kind of puzzle-like problems while building communication skills with each other and being able to communicate everything they're doing with each other there. In a similar vein to what you see in the others, I too was very surprised when I opened up my class materials and found pasta when we were trying to figure out how to make different types of triangles early on in geometry. The kids were very excited on that day. But yeah, we're seeing a lot of increased engagement from students. Two or three students just the other day asking, oh, are we going to do something fun like last week? Where we were standing up at the whiteboards again. And I was like, yes, that's most of the day. So they're very engaged with it. It's kind of showing them that math doesn't just have to be something that you're sitting at a desk, working through problems on. It can be much more engaging. It can be much more socially focused as well. Currently, we are still working to make sure that all of our students are kind of getting used to this format of talking through their answers. Sometimes our higher-performing students really like to just get their answer and run to the next problem without really working through it. But we're seeing a lot of improvement in that area. We're seeing a lot of students get more engaged with discussing that learning. And we're hoping that as we see more students from the lower levels coming up who've been in illustrative mathematics more than just, I think, a few years now, that we'll see even better engagement as we go.
So our next step says we're moving forward. As we continue on with our implementation, we're going to engage in more frequent cycles of peer observations and feedback conversations within our learning communities.
What naturally flows from those cycles of getting to see your peers teach and getting feedback and having that discussion is opportunities for reflection on our own practice and then opportunities to goal set around our own goals for instruction and for our classroom student achievement.
And then all of these actions will continue to be part of our unit planning and our lesson study activities, which are embedded within the P L Cs.
Great. What questions do you have for this team?
I would just like to commend the teachers. Back when I started as a math teacher, going in someone else's room was not done. That was just, you just close your door and do what you do. So the fact that you guys open your classrooms to each other, I think, is really, really a big deal. And I think that's a great way to reflect on what you're doing and share common skills. So I think it's great.
Yeah, thank you guys for everything that you're doing. I know during conferences, actually, my daughter's math teacher told me how much she liked the new curriculum. Which is pretty amazing that they bring that up at conferences, so.
I've got two quick questions. So you've now had two years of training your teachers. So what do you have in plan for new teachers, new hires this summer, to catch them up to speed? How are we, how much time do you have to catch them up to speed, I guess?
Do we need to run and talk to?
Yeah, we can test that. New Teacher Academy, last year, we made the change that it is over four days now. So day three of that is just a deep dive into all things curriculum and instruction. So built into that is a morning of math planning. And it is an abbreviated version of that three-day training that the teachers got as part of their implementation in the summer. So usually, that is the first step. And then a follow-up, coaching opportunities in the building with their instructional coach.
And then their grade level or content, P L C or team continues to support that as well. But yes, we have kind of redesigned New Teacher Academy to account for the need to make sure we're maintaining kind of the integrity and bringing that training to the people that are entering the system for sure. It's not, it's not as comprehensive, but it is, as Jill said, an abbreviated version.
So like, because you said, like, the first year, they had the whole, their time was spent getting that first unit. So is there like, what do you get to hand them? Here's your, like, is there a nice thing that you hand them that's like, here's your first unit, ready to go? Like, or is that something like the grade level teams help each other with kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they do have like the actual instructional materials, but just to make sense of it.
Right.
And the pacing of it is done kind of at the team level.
Okay. And then my second question, and this would kind of is directed at you guys as the teachers. What, one of my original hesitations about this curriculum was the incredible amount of writing that is involved in it and how you, you know, distinguish for, you know, if we're assessing their math skills or their writing skills. So so much of it is explain your thinking. And so a lot of that is written form. So what are some actual things you're doing in the classroom to really see their math understanding and not their language understanding?
Right. I would say I accept a lot of different methods and strategies. And I'm not correcting grammar or anything like that. It's very shorthand because I'm a shorthand kind of person, too. So I'm not digging deep into that. But I have some students that give this much, and I have some that I like to write. So I'm going to really explain my thinking, and I applaud all. So it's a shout-out on what they are producing.
Okay.
At the high school level, we try to help kids practice their writing in explaining their math thinking. A lot of times for students who, you know, where it comes as something completely new, to be writing out answers in math, we'll talk them through like, you know, different sentence starters, ways to start framing their thinking. We definitely have, on both ends of the spectrum, students who are able to get their thinking explained in one sentence pretty clearly, and others who will fill the entire page on a math test. And for a lot of them, it's trying to focus in on, you know, looking at those, kind of what's the main thing you're going for? What is the actual point you're looking for? It's a lot of practicing those skills leading up to it. The nice thing is that practicing those skills does assist the kids in thinking through the math itself. Because being able to explain it to someone else usually shows a much deeper level of understanding than just kind of the surface, kind of recognizing patterns instead of seeing the underlying reasons that different answers come out.
Yeah, I think at the elementary level, we see it in like visual representations and pictures. We work really hard with them to understand the problem before we kind of send them off to work. You know, what is it asking me to do? Are there words that mean certain things, like difference means subtraction? Or groups might be multiplication, division? So we kind of give them some scaffolds and help them understand the question. And then if they want to draw a picture, that's usually acceptable. And a lot of times, the different strategies have names. So they might not be able to write you a complete sentence, but they might be able to say, well, I use this strategy. And then here's a picture of how it's solved.
Kind of like they were saying, I try to give my students like a bank of ideas that they can use to explain or show their reasoning. So a lot of things, a lot of what we're running into now is like, they just want to show me the formula and how they did it. And so I try to say like two ways. So they could use words, or a lot of them like to draw like arrows and label, like I did this here. Also, there's diagrams a lot in fifth grade where they have to shade in. And then like labeling that diagram has been helpful. So it's not just a lot of times them like writing out paragraphs, but like labeling and explaining through that. I'll also say that I M does a good job of like the language routines and like having them share with a partner first. And so that's been really helpful, like share and talk about it before you write it, and then giving them the sentence stems to do that.
Have you found that it's easier to find misconceptions? Or, you know, like if they're going down the wrong path, is it with I M, you've found that it's easier to hit those first? Okay, before. Okay, thank you.
How common is the adoption of this, what I would say is remarkably improved instruction across the state?
It's very popular.
So the kids that we're getting would already maybe be exposed to this?
Yeah, depending on where they're coming from. But a lot of districts have moved to illustrative math, and the state has really lifted it up as well. Not that they're endorsing one set of instructional materials, but they refer to it a lot in their guidance. Most of the E S A briefs for targeted schools, when you clicked on them, it went to something from illustrative math.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
So we're going to do our quarterly strategic plan update. So as the portion of my team, we're not all together tonight. So first, I want to remind you, the data that you're going to review, we're consuming this data at the district level. We're not getting down into school, classroom, or individual student level. So this is just what's happening across our district. We give you these updates three times a year. You guys also received in the assembly, you can see the board data is here. That's something that you had asked for, I believe, a year or so ago so that you had more. If you wanted to dig deeper into it, you could. And then the goal explanations are also in there. I just want to remind of our culture of dignity and belonging, that this is the filter that we take everything through so that we can make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. The next couple of screens, I apologize for the blurriness of these, but I just wanted to remind you of what our annual goals and measures were. In the Student Achievement pillar, we measure graduation rate and I S A S data. data. And the, what is now called the Equity and Inclusion pillar, we recognize through conditions for learning, emotional safety, the Algebra I assessment, third grade literacy, and chronic absenteeism. In our Service pillar, we are measuring the Family School Relationship Survey, the solvency ratio, and our UAB ratio. And in the Safety and Well-Being pillar, we focus on conditions for learning, again, emotional safety, physical safety, student-student relationships, adult-student relationships, and boundaries and expectations. So those are just a little bit of a reminder. And we'll start with our Student Achievement pillar, where Brandon will go through that information.
Yeah, so the district administrative team and teacher leaders across the system had the opportunity to review all of our data related to our strategic plan, as well as grade level and content area teams post-winter screening took a look at their data and they made revisions to how they were supporting unfinished learning. But celebrations that we identified were that K1 early reading proficiency increased from 63 to 72%. We saw an increase in the CBMR proficiency between winter or spring or fall to winter. And then the overall A reading proficiency increased from fall to winter as well. And then early math proficiency increased from fall to winter. And then in our winter gold for preschool just indicates that we have, we've reached the kind of that healthy core for both literacy and math as 80% or more proficient. Opportunities continue to be that most grade levels kind of experienced adverse trends overall when looking at individual grades from fall to winter and A reading. And then most grade levels experience an adverse trend in proficiency from fall to winter on A math.
With our next pillar, we see connections to the system-wide, our school-based systems and structures and our teaching and learning. Some celebrations that we see, 89% of students in Algebra I are receiving AC minus or higher. This has a connection to our end-of-year assessment. So as we're making progress throughout the year, checking in on that. And we definitely have increased awareness of chronic absenteeism within the district and within the state. Some areas and opportunities for improvement, our chronic absenteeism increased from quarter one to quarter two, which makes a lot of sense as that's the time of year where the flu and everything starts to play. And then 18% of students overall during semester one were chronically absent.
I'll handle the Service pillar data. The solvency ratio has improved at a faster rate than we anticipated, from about six point even to up to about 8.8 is what it's forecast for now. I actually feel like it's going to be a little higher than that. The UAB has remained steady at greater than 10%. And it's forecast as of January to be at 18.4.
And I'm going to talk a little bit about safety and well-being. A couple of celebrations is that all of our grade levels on the SABRs and all but two on my SABRs are above 80%, which is fantastic, indicating a healthy core for social-emotional character education. And certainly that's something we would be striving for in all of our curricular areas, but it's really great to see it here. And then pre-K winter gold data indicates a healthy core curriculum, higher than 80% again proficiency in social-emotional. And for these overall strategic action updates, I'll talk about the first two and then Dr. Dak will hit the last one a little bit. But we are currently working through with a couple of groups. First, on the evaluation system for classified employees. So if you remember, we just did a full revamp and review of our professional evaluation for our teachers overall and are in the midst of year one there. We're also taking a look at our system then for classified employees, which is much smaller and it's less, I guess, robust in that it takes place typically once a year. But we're taking a look at a few of the key components, getting some feedback from staff members on that. And that work is happening currently. We have our second get-together with that group here very soon. In terms of reviewing of hiring practices, we're working with a different employee advisory group there, just taking a look at some of the things that we really want to take variation out of or where we might have variation. For instance, one of the things is looking at interview questions and making sure that for positions that are hired across the district, like elementary teacher, that we can see some really common things that we're looking for that really match what we're trying to do with the rest of our strategic plan and bringing people in that really, really can live that. So there's, that's just one example of how we're taking a look at that with maybe a few actions taking place moving forward as well.
And with respect to the future facility needs, you know, that I think there's a couple of you that have been on that committee, working with Eric Barron from DLR, are leading us through that work. And it is about at the process where we need to talk with the city, talk with the board, and kind of update everybody on the work that has been up to this point. It's been, I'm not going to lie, a little busy right now. So I have not gotten that next session scheduled. I plan to talk with Eric when I see him this week about getting something on the calendar so that we can continue to move that forward. So that is work that is important to the district and timely. So I recognize the fact that it needs to move a bit quicker. So that's where we are with that piece. And I think that is our update. So if there's questions, we can be prepared to answer those for you.
Thank you for the update. You prepared us so well. We understand what's coming now. So I feel like we're ahead. It's good.
Okay, so this is, oh no, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead of you guys. All right.
Representatives.
I'll be quiet.
We don't have a ton to share this week. Not a ton happening at the high school, but we just wanted to point out, one exciting event that happened at the high school was our Career Con, which we held recently. We had a bunch of representatives from different businesses in the community as well as outside the community come to the high school. I did not attend, but I know majority, if not all of our junior class attended this Career Con where they got to talk and hear presentations from different businesses around the community and then also talk one-on-one with them afterwards if they would like to. This was just a great opportunity. I know we had it last year. I'm not sure how many years it's been now, but it's just been, it was great to have that and have students be able to hear about the different jobs and paths that they can take after high school in Urbandale, but also just within their life. I know that lots of students learned a lot, learned a lot from this con and it also opened their eyes to different internships and jobs they can take at the moment, like during their high school career, which is pretty awesome to see as it helps get them ready for life after high school. So that was pretty awesome.
Only two other things. So while the spring break is near, end of school year is near for our seniors, so there's been a lot of college planning, some college visits to the school. I always walk in, there's a whiteboard right there with who's going to be there, who's going to be there soon, and what to look out for. There's some FAFSA help going on. So just sort of guiding students through that process. And the last thing is just spring break soon. We're all excited to have some break and then get back at it after.
You've had your last snow day.
Last, in March. That was impressive.
Yes.
Thank you. So we have no public comment tonight. So we will move right on to.
Okay, and again, I apologize for jumping so far ahead. The next item is the changes to district documents. And again, I, this is really what, the details in this is what I read at the beginning and I felt like I needed to do that to set the tone for what we were talking about. And one of the first areas is that we were recommended to look at is the job description for Stephanie Davis, which we, we kind of knew a couple of years ago that this might be an avenue that the state or the government, mostly the state, we thought we had a couple of years to do it. The job description itself is attached in here and the edits that you see are the edits that were recommended by our legal counsel to change. And for the title, we are just going to ask to call this the Director of Student Services. So that would bring us into compliance with what the current expectations are politically. So I know I read that fast at the beginning, so if there's any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer them.
Has, I, I'm, this is just a mystery to me, as I'm sure it is to a lot of school board members across the country and administrators. I'm looking here and they talk about how that the US Department of Education will assess compliance and additional guidance from the US Department of Education will be coming. From what I've heard, it's entirely possible that in the next several months, there may not be a US Department of Education. And so what situation does that put public education in, in terms of the expectations of meeting those requirements?
Oh, I'm going to guess because we haven't, we haven't gotten that information either. But a great deal of what the Department of Education does, there's talk of moving it to the state level for the state to administer. We talked today, for example, about title funding. We don't know where that's going to go. We don't know if it'll go to the state and flow to the schools. Will it change to a different kind of grant? Will it be something that's competitive? Or we don't know what that would look like. So I, I would guess that this would come to the state level for enforcement. Right now, there's a portal that was created for anyone that wants to go in and identify their child's school or a school that they know of that they believe is violating any of this so that that can be turned into the government, hoping that people go through and put in how great their school district is instead and maybe give them something else to read. But I wish I knew for sure.
Don't we all?
I know there's a lot of districts that have already started to remove things. We're trying to be very meaningful about it and follow the guidance that we're getting from legal rather than just take everything in the world off because we don't necessarily know, you know, now there's words that we don't know if we can use certain words. And is it the word itself? Is it how it's used? Is it the intent? We just want to do it in a meaningful way that we're not rushing to something, but still complying with the law. We do not intend to break the law. The fear is that federal funding will be restricted or removed if you're not following the law. And that's something I don't know any district that can afford to lose federal funding. Because that will not go to the state to provide you the money for it.
Thank goodness for local control.
And I think we also need to reiterate to our community that we are maintaining our goals of teaching all and reaching all, that that is our number one priority to reach all of our students, even the marginalized students, that we're still, we're not cutting you, we're not cutting you loose. You still are part of our community.
And we're committed to anti-discrimination of all kinds. That's, that's part of who we are. So we can still do that and comply with the law.
Can you point out what direct effects, what direct effects on funding? For example, Title I. What else?
Anything that's federal funding, anything we get.
But we're not handing out Pell Grants. So what kind of effect directly on the district if the department were to go away? Which worst case, you know, if it just disappeared, our Title.
Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV, what we have here, all those could.
But you also, special ed funding trickles down to the states through the federal government. So that could be a disaster if we were to lose any kind of special education funding. And I'm sure EL funding flow from the government at any point?
The Title III funding.
Title III, okay.
That helps to supplement and enrich education for English learners is funded through Title III.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, if the board would like it, we can bring that back in our next More You Know to kind of outline how much funding we're talking about.
I don't, I don't know that that's totally necessary, but I think people do need to understand there is a direct vocal effect. That it's not just Pell Grants, FAFSA, you know, all those things that services that are provided that people don't really realize comes through that department.
Yeah.
It's going to have to go somewhere. And I personally feel like the biggest effect is the title funds for specialized reading instruction for people who don't know what that is.
Yeah, we have five. We talked about that today. We have five interventionists employed through our title funding to provide reading and math services to our students in need.
And that's over 400 some thousand.
Yeah. And that's just us?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just us.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Move on to the Athletics and Activities position.
Take them out.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we do need to. This is a roll call. No, it's not. Okay, so all those, we need a motion first.
I would move to change the district documents. Is that what you're talking about? To align with new federal and state laws.
Minky will reluctantly second.
So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we'll really move on.
I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time. So we're going to have Jared Power come up from Athletics and Activities. We, as you know, you approved a couple of board meetings ago, or maybe the last one, an administrative assistant for the department. And as we've talked about restructuring the department so that we can retain employees and not have them working 80 to 100 hours a week and have to go through every couple of years, this request that we have in tonight is one of those requests to take an existing position that is, will be vacant and restructure that position to be more of an assistant director. I can let Jared talk about anything or go straight to the questions. It's up to whatever the board would like to discuss at this point.
What do you think? Questions? Is, is the main difference between the previous position and this one is the ability to like evaluate the coaches? Is that the biggest difference between that?
Yeah. And our coordinators now, they could get their evaluator approval in the coordinator position. It's just a class that you take. But what Dr. Dak and I have talked about is having somebody that's got, we prefer to find somebody that's got the pre-K12 administrative license so there's an understanding of how school systems work and things like that. And not that our current coordinators don't know that, but I just think having an overall systems view of what a public school looks like would be helpful in this position as well.
And this was something that I talked to Dr. Watson about back during my first year. One of the coordinators at the time was working on a license and the idea was that once they got through that process, that this would be what we would do because there's a lot more responsibility with that. There's a lot more work with that. And I feel like we owe it to the, the coaches because they're not going to get, with 100 something coaches to evaluate, they're not going to get the feedback that they need. They need to have that authentic feedback, not going to one track meet and saying, oh, you did a great job. Here's your evaluation. Or no, you didn't do a great job. Here's your evaluation. So we felt like we owed that to them. And this was what we had talked about even when Josh got here, is doing that same thing. So we're in a position now that it can actually happen. And that's why we feel like this would be a better way to give them, give them what they need to actually lead Athletics and Activities versus just managing events and checking boxes.
For example, like right now, for the winter seasons, I've got 38 evaluations to do. That's a lot. Like, we, granted, there are different types of evaluations than what a teacher evaluation would be, but like 38 is more than some of our administrators have total. So when you think about having 169 of or whatever it is throughout the school year, it probably does work out to a bigger load than what a lot of our administrators in the district are doing.
And do we have a good, I know we just redid our evaluation system for teachers. Do you have a good tool in place to do evaluation? Do you have a good tool in place to do evaluations or is that something that we need to evaluate as a district as well?
Yeah, so I've had conversations with Mr. DeCryf about that, because I've been talking to some of the other CIML ADs about what their processes look like. Some of them have sent me some documents and I do think we need to probably look at what evaluation looks like in general. One of the ideas that was shared with me from another CIML school was to put programs on a cycle. So kind of like we do with our teachers where they're on cycle every three years. Then the other two years, they're doing a professional learning plan. If we were to move to something like that, we would just evaluate the program in general every three years, which I think is probably good practice anyway to, instead of trying to evaluate every program every year. And it allows you for a couple of years of, of growth and intentional steps toward making that growth as a program.
And are we worried about finding quality candidates to fill this role since it's kind of like somebody who's, you know, qualified to be an AD, but it's a different step there? Are we worried about that process or?
No, I think the, I think we'll get some good candidates. I think the types of candidates we're gonna get, because we're not gonna be able to compete salary-wise with like an assistant position at Walker or Ankeny. But the types of candidates we'll get are like people who may be doing it at the middle school level at a, at a different district or ADs at a smaller school that's nearby. Because I know the last time we had the coordinator position open, that was, some of the candidates we were getting was one A and two A ADs that are looking for a bump in salary and more responsibility and those sorts of things.
Can you talk a little bit about how this fits in now and in the long-term planning with reducing the workload for those of you in the department? Because I've read through all the documents and I understand how it helps with other administrator coverage, but how does it help you specifically in your department?
Well, I think, yeah, the initial one with the evaluation, that's, what I, I did some math yesterday because I was like thirty-eight evaluations for the winter season. Let's say that I spend half an hour actually writing the document and then half an hour or more in each conversation with the coach. I just had one on Friday and it was half hour forty-five minutes. And that didn't include the time that I had spent actually reading through their reflection and going through the document and deciding if they met the criteria or not. So that's thirty-eight hours worth of time. So when you think about a eight-hour workday, that's a whole week of work just in doing evaluation documents and meetings with coaches. So I think that's kind of the initial payoff of having a position like that. And then I think going to that idea of putting programs on a cycle, I think that allows for more targeted assistance for those programs. Because I know previously at the high school, like when I first started as dean, I just inherited a list of people that I was gonna evaluate. So I had PE, I had at-risk, I had a couple of English teachers and it was just kind of a smorgasbord of whoever the previous person had, that's who I inherited. So two years ago, then we moved to the kind of the silo method of doing evaluation where then I had PE, the whole department. I had at-risk, the whole department. So it just allows you to kind of understand the bigger picture of what's going on with all the people instead of just, okay, here's my experience with one person while somebody else is having a different experience with another person, but in the same department. It's just gonna be able to allow us to kind of focus that energy into those programs to hopefully start seeing some longer-term planning being done instead of just kind of in the moment like, okay, that season just happened. Let's reflect on it. Okay, and we're moving on to the next season. It'll hopefully give us a bigger overall picture of what's happening.
I know there's times professionally when we get caught up in doing the day-to-day details, which is what I'm hearing with the evaluations. And we don't often pause long enough to do the strategy. Will this give you enough time to really focus on the strategy? Because we've heard from our community that we need to improve our athletics. Yeah. Does this give you the time you need to do that?
I think it'll help. So I think the admin assistant position in addition to something like this, I think both of those help with freeing up some time to do more long-term planning. Because we'll still have another coordinator position to work with too. I'm still kind of laying out what those responsibilities would look like with all four of our positions to kind of delegate the work. But the admin assistant's gonna pick up a lot of the kind of day-to-day clerical tasks. So that's just kind of naturally gonna free the other three of us up to do some other things as far as like talking long-term planning and meeting with other departments. Because I know there's a push for activities in community and having more of a relationship because it used to be within the same department, now it's two different departments. And, but we still need to have that connection with our community ed. And that's one of the big things that I want to focus on is how are we supporting our little kids? I mean, I've got a preschooler and a first grader right now. So like, I remember when I was in lower elementary and like I just idolized the high school kids. Like we'd go to a basketball game, we'd go to a volleyball game and like they were just so cool because they could do all these things that I couldn't do. So I think having those, having that time to strategically plan how to get those kids, like our high school students down into the elementaries to start building those relationships with our programs is gonna be a real key.
It's also important to bring middle school more aligned and connected to the high school sports. And right now, they exist and are sort of connected, but we need to make sure that it's more of a intentional focus because that's the middle of grabbing those little kids, but also what are you doing with them in the middle school? So there's a lot of work that needs to be done there.
Well, and I think with a position like this too, we can maybe, whether it's the coordinator or the assistant, have that person spend more time at the, at the middle school to form those relationships with kids and be there for all the sign-ups and the team meetings and things like that, just so that we've got a presence. Because up until a couple of years ago, we did have that presence in the building and then we restructured. And I think this gives us an opportunity to kind of get back into the building and not full-time, but at least a couple or, or three days a week to be that activities presence at the middle school.
Seems like if you're talking about a programming approach, that that would really lend itself to helping to resolve a lot of the things that have come up in our previous discussions about preparation. That seems like a highly logical plan. And I would certainly encourage that, you know, maybe even periodically you could come back and visit with us about how that's paid off and that that is, you know, an expectation from the board because that was clearly communicated from the community. And I think when you're talking about, you know, community ed, building those youth programs, more interaction, really coordinating with the middle school people, I'd also think that that would help to retain some of your staff if they could see hope for the future. Yeah.
Well, and just to be transparent, like we're going through that right now with middle school girls' track and you guys have probably heard some of that and I know some of you heard some of that, where we're trying to get fully staffed because we lost several coaches from last year. And I think we're gonna be all right, but I think having that presence in the building and accurately recruiting is, it's hard for me to get down there during the day to go talk to those people. Like I have to be strategic about setting a time and I think if we had somebody in the building that was building those relationships with the staff and the coaches, then that's gonna help us keep those programs fully staffed and hopefully lose fewer people.
Anyone else?
I had one other question, but I am not the expert on this. But is there any, I guess, reason to think about opening up to like allowing them to complete their evaluator and administrator authorization within a certain period of time? Would that help you have more candidate, a bigger candidate pool? Or is it required that we post it as a requirement on hire? I'm kind of looking at all three of you now.
Lauren, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we have a qualified candidate, we would have to pursue that first and rule the qualified candidates out before we could hire somebody to, kind of on a conditional basis.
No benefit supposedly.
We can go preferred or required in terms of the certification, but then we also, depending what the pool looks like, we can make those sorts of, not concessions, but adjustments if needed to then get to the right certification.
Well, and I will say too, like my job prior to coming to Urbandale was student engagement coordinator in Des Moines at one of the middle schools. That's their terminology for middle school AD. And I've had several of my former coworkers reach out and say like, hey, if you've ever got an opportunity, like I'd love to pursue that. So like, I know at least a handful of them that would apply for this and jump at that opportunity to have that sort of position. Because right now, they, they get teacher salary plus a stipend in Des Moines. So this would be a little bit of a bump for some of those folks that have really good experience already working in Des Moines and are looking for that next step in their career.
Minky will move to approve the changes to the Athletics and Activity position.
And Hauser will second.
Okay, this is a roll call. Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Minky?
Yes.
Ben Ricewe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Back to whatever activity you left.
There is a concert, but my kids wanted to go get ice cream, so I'm gonna meet them for that first.
Gotta take care of them.
Yep.
On to the UHS and TA.
So there's a request for two halftime positions at the high school. Recently, Cabinet, my team went over and met with the high school administration on their scheduling expectations for next year and where their status was on numbers and how many requested and how many sections we need, et cetera, et cetera. Two of the most requested areas are manufacturing and family consumer science. And we don't often get a chance to add, to give those courses to kids. So what the high school requested was a half for each one of those areas. We don't have space. We don't have two cooking labs. We don't have two manufacturing carpentry areas. So we can make it work for a half. Tim and his team have a plan for how we can have that half using those facilities when the current teachers are not in those facilities. So that will increase the number of kids who will get that offering in their course request. So that's the reason that we're requesting a half for each of those. For financial impact right now, I made a note that everything I've brought to you so far is relatively net zero. There's a couple of thousand dollars different, like, I don't know where we were, twenty at, probably down to about twenty. But I, I can assure you that I am paying very close attention to that and not going and adding a whole lot of positions without accounting for other areas where we've made efficiencies. So we feel like this is a good move for Tim and his team to be able to start bringing those courses into play for more kids so that we can continue to grow our career work.
Is manufacturing project leadway?
No, this is, I, I want to say Woods, but it, how, how do I better describe it?
Okay, okay.
Cicero's area.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
They're in the, the back room. They're planning to repurpose some of that. And then there's the time where she's not in the room that they, they can share space. So I don't, I'm hoping Tim has had that conversation now that I'm saying that on TV. But there might be more to come there.
And I, I would, in my experience, which was granted a long time ago, I know that these have, our facilities and our lack of staff have hampered student enrollment in a significant way that I think has not been very good for the kids.
Does anybody else have questions?
I would move, we recommend, or we approve the recommendation for the addition of a halftime FTE in manufacturing and halftime FTE, family consumer science position for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Young will second. And it's a roll call. Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Minky?
Yes.
Ben Ricewe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
A motion passes seven zero.
I would move to bring forward the consent agenda.
Can I, before you start talking about that, make a note on the addendum? The personnel report addendum. There's a, Jay Fox is listed as a high school employee. She actually works at Webster. And I just wanted the record to be clear that's a typo.
I had one more that I thought was a typo that I'll throw in there too. Mr. McConnell's Dean of Students effective date was twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Oh, was that on the original report?
On the original, not the addendum.
I did not look at that.
I assume we're not retroactively approving it when we approved a different one.
He would, he's currently interim.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so.
Well, he's, it's effective August first, twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-four. That's it. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Can I ask a quick question? On the appointments, I believe the person who's in the new work-based learning teacher will be fabulous in that role. But have we, have we evaluated whether that will be a conflict of interest at all? His, who, who will his supervisor be?
Tim.
Tim will be his supervisor.
Well, I don't know who's evaluating him, but it would be an administrator at the high school.
Okay.
Yeah. It would not be our Director of Student Services.
Just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, she'd be harder on him than that.
I think he'll be fabulous in that role.
Didn't Margaret second?
Will you second?
Yes.
I will second the consent agenda. I sure can. Thank you.
Mead?
Yes.
Minky?
Yes.
Ben Ricewe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
I would move to adjourn.
Maybe a second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?